Good evening. I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, November 13th, 2024. Adam Secretary, roll call please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson's here. Commissioner Lynn.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Zakiri.
Here.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as long as you're standing, anyone who testifies before the commission, including staff, please raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony you give will be all the truth. Thank you. Another reminder, if anyone please silence your phones. And again, anyone who testifies needs to sign in with their contact information, name and contact info, either at the podium or out in the hallway. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the October 9, 2024 regular meeting. I have a motion to approve.
Motion, Scales.
Second, Zakiri.
Motion, Scales. Second, Zakiri. I have motion, the second. Discussion of those minutes. Seeing none, roll call please.
Chairperson Peterson votes yes. Chairperson Lynn?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Lynn. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. Next item is to review our public hearing procedures. As you know, this, we're on the air and being recorded. So, one, everyone, everything you say, please into the microphone so that it's recorded and you're addressing the commission at all times. First is the applicant comes forward, is introduced, you produce your, present your petition, and then staff comments in background, followed by any public people who would like to comment or question staff and the petitioner. And finally, then the commissioners will discuss and hopefully get to a vote. And as a reminder that our vote is a recommendation only to the village board. We don't have the final say so. Under old business, I see none. Moving on to new business. First, under public hearing, PCC 0232024, a request by FHPB Company Limited Liability Company, the petitioner, and SJ Investment Associates, the owner, at 822 East Ogden, for the following. First, a special use permit to operate an animal grooming business in the B2 general business district. Who would address this issue? Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. Hi, everybody. My name is Farqan Hadi. I'm the owner of the Bowie Barker business, representing this application today. I have a few slides prepared for all of you, so I can jump into it. I assume you can see the slides? Okay, awesome. Cool. So, I am the owner of the Bowie Barker business. This is a franchise concept that we are going all over Illinois. We opened our first official store about two months ago in Lincoln Park. Now, we're going to Westmont is our second location. Our business is very simple. It's a dog groomer where we do bats and grooming. So, we offer three types of services that I'll go through. The first kind of service is a service where you can wash your own dog. The second service is we wash the dog for you, and then we also groom the dog as well. I'll go through a bunch of different explanations. That's my dog, Leila. She's on the screen. But I'll give you a little bit of a quick intro, talk a little bit about the pet market, talk a little bit about the opportunity, our business model, why it's different than most pet groomers, talk a little bit about my team and how we're going to run this business. I'll talk about our operations in terms of hours, parking, day-to-day operations, and then any questions that you may all have. So, I'll try to keep it short and quick, but feel free to ask anything anytime. So, with that being said, this is our Bowie Barker presentation. The pet industry is absolutely massive, but it's also very segmented. If you ever have a dog or if you're taking your dog to a dog grooming, the experience is pretty not great. It's a very old-school industry. There's no technology behind it. There's no transparency in terms of what the animal's going through. And so, our whole business is built on changing that industry to make sure that we give you, the parent of the animal, the best experience possible. And we do that by a couple of different things. One, we have an application that's very transparent where you can get to see check-in, get to see your dog getting groomed, check out, and be able to kind of track your journey with us as we bathe and groom your dog. And then the second thing is all of our staff is really focused on creating the best experience possible. So, as soon as you walk in, you're greeted by the front desk. The groomer actually comes out to greet your dog. We use a lot of treats to make sure that we're building a relationship with the pet, and we make sure that the pet is really taken care of throughout the entire experience. Some of the things we do is we have a camera on every dog at all times. We have a policy for safety in terms of how the animal's controlled. No dog will ever touch another dog in our facility. All dogs are obviously leashed. No employee will leave a dog without an arm's length. So, at all times, there's a worker taking care of that dog. So, really just transforming the experience to offer the best possible service and take care of the animal. With that being said, really, the pet industry is completely blown up specifically after COVID, which is why we're in this business and why this business was created. This was a COVID business. During COVID, it was very difficult to get your animal groomed. You had to wait three, four weeks at a time. It wasn't a central business. So, the locations that did perform that service were open. We did not exist until after COVID, but this whole idea came from COVID and came from this process of trying to create a better experience for the consumer and for the animal. I won't go through the lumburs, but it's a huge industry, a huge opportunity to provide a really good service. As you can also kind of see, just a quick little overview, a lot of millennials and Gen Zs have jumped into the pet industry. Average millennial and Gen Z has about one animal, trending towards two. So, the dog industry has become very popular with some of the younger generations as well. Obviously, with Gen X and the baby boom population, they also continue to have animals, but the Gen Z and the millennial generation is growing in that capacity, which is why we're also so focused on, you know, socials and applications in terms of technology. Our footprint is very simple. It's very small. These are all real pictures, by the way. Every picture in this deck is from my Lincoln Park location. So, this is how our store looks and feels, and we'll duplicate this concept in Westmont. So, as you can see, very simple layout, small footprint. We try to target around 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. The space that we have in Westmont is about 1,400. We can make it work. I'll go through the actual layout. Everything is simple, smells really good, smells clean. Our biggest pet peeve is walking into a store and having that strong scent of dog smell. We maintain it by having additional fresh air intakes, making sure that the space is always clean, central vac system, scandals, when we can spray down after each animal. So, the space is always clean and try to avoid that smell. At the end of the day, it's a dog business, so there's going to be a little bit of scent, but we have very high cleaning procedures. Everything is custom. Our space is entirely custom in terms of how we design it, how we build it, even the front desk. That's custom millwork that we build on our own to try to give that experience. And then finally, we have a little TV so you can see your dog. We take pictures of your animal. We send them to you. It's also on the TV so that you can always see it once you're kind of in and out of the store. Our space, retail shelving, very simple retail. We sell dog treats and dog toys. Very simple. We also give out a lot of treats, so we have our own big boxes of treats that we pass out to the dogs as they come in and out. Those are our do-it-yourself tubs. So, we're trying to give a very clean experience. So, like a lot of times, you go to a do-it-yourself tub, it's just a metal tub. It's pretty ugly, smells pretty bad. In our situation, we customize it, make it really nice, give you towels, give you everything that you need to come bathe your own dogs. Majority of customers don't want to bathe their own dogs, but it's a very nice option, especially if you like take your dog out for a quick run. You don't need the full service. You just need to kind of do a quick rinse. You don't want to do it at your house. It creates too much of a mess. That option is always available. If you're a member with us, it's actually free. And if you're not a member with us, it's $25 for unlimited usage. So, very affordable for you to come in, wash your own dog for 10, 15 minutes, and take it out. From a marketing perspective, like I mentioned earlier, we're really big on socials. We already have over 60,000 followers on Instagram. There is a store in West Hollywood in California. That was the first original store. Then, the company built another store in Culver City, California. And then, I took over the Illinois market about two years ago with the first one going live about two months ago. And we obviously care about reviews. So, if you look at any of our reviews for any of our locations, we really thrive for that five-star experience from start to finish. So, we really care about what the customer thinks and how they think of us. Kind of jumping into our team, again, some pictures from our Lincoln Park opening, but the team will be focused on providing the best experience possible. What that means is there's me, obviously, the owner. The Westmont store will have a general manager that will run day-to-day operations. They'll be dedicated to that store. We'll also have four front desk staff. At any time the store is open, we'll always have one front desk plus one manager. So, at no time will there be nobody there. As long as we're open, you'll always have one front desk and one manager. That's just our model to make sure that we're well-staffed. So, we'll have about four total front desk staff to start off. We'll have three bathers. We do specialize between bathers and groomers. Groomers can bathe as well, but ideally, they should be focused on the specialty, which is grooming. But we'll have three bathers and three grooming staff to start off. So, we'll start off our 11 employees, but we have the opportunity to grow really fast. So, as business comes in, we'll continue to hire. We have a capacity to get up to 25 employees at 100% capacity, which will take us about two years to hit, but we have the capacity and the space to add more staff over time. But we'll start off with 11 employees running the business. From an operations perspective, right now, the plan is to open Monday through Friday, 9 to 6. There is a possibility we switch that to 8 to 5 because it seems to be where people want to come in before they go to work. But as of right now, the plan is Monday through Fri-- Monday through Sunday. That's a typo. Sorry about that. 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, we'll be open and operating. In terms of parking, we are a drop-off business, so there's no reason for you to stay and wait for the dog. Our timing is based on how big your dog is and what kind of hair they have. So, we have different types of dog breeds, and that breed will justify how much time the dog needs. So, what we do is we take the dog in, we give you an estimated time of pickup, and we notify you 30 minutes before the dog is ready so that you can pick it up. We don't hold the dog more than 30 minutes. So, once the dog is ready, you only have 30 minutes, and you have to pick up your dog in 30 minutes. We don't, we don't want to keep the dog in our possession for more than that. So, from a parking perspective and operations perspective, you drop off the dog, we take possession, you leave, we'll let you know. We'll text you 30 minutes before. You come back, you pick it up. You shouldn't be in that parking lot for more than five minutes unless you're doing something else in our shopping center. I mentioned the services. You wash, you can wash your own dog. We wash, we wash the dog for you, and then grooming for all dogs. We do have obviously vaccine and safety requirements, but as long as you read our vaccine and safety requirements, we don't discriminate against what dog it is. We service all ages and all dog types, and we have protocols and experienced team that's trained to take care of any type of dog personality. Our shop layout, it's going to be pretty simple. It's about 400 square feet of front desk or lobby space. The lobby space will be beautiful, very custom, custom lighting, custom desks, custom do-it-yourself tubs. So, if you can walk with me, you'll walk in. The first thing you'll see is the do-it-yourself station. Then, you'll get the front desk where you'll be welcomed by our staff. There's some retail shelving. There is a couch and a TV that will show the pictures. Once you go through the first wall, everything else is back of house. So, the customer will actually never engage once you go through that first big green door and the animal, but not the customer. Once you get through the green door, we have kennels, we have drying stations for the dogs, we have three tubs, three big metal tubs where our staff will wash the dogs, and then six grooming tables where we'll groom the dogs. Break room, office, and laundry. Pretty simple layout. Again, once you go through the first lobby space, the customer will never interact with the back of house. Everything is in the front of house, which is a small space. And really, like at the end, our mission is to, you know, improve the health and hygiene of every dog, to nurture the bond between dogs and humans, and to support and enable more dog rescues and adoptions. We do partner with a lot of rescues, and we offer free grooming services for those rescues. We also try to take pictures and advertise them on social media. We actually just did a campaign in Chicago with one of the organizations, and we were able to get three dogs adopted in two weeks. California stores do that quite a bit as well. They've gotten up to 30 dogs adopted last year. So, we try to help and do our part in the community as well as support, obviously, all our customers. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. First, let's go to our village planner, Walsh. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening. Thank you. So, yes, I'll go over the staff comments for the Bowie Barker special use permit request. So, 822 East Ogden Avenue is in St. James Crossing and is zoned B2 where animal grooming businesses are special uses. The property is bordered by other B2 properties to the north and to the west, and the property to the south is in the Village of Clarendon Hills Limited Office District, and the property to the east is in Hinsdale's R2 Single Family Residential District. Animal grooming businesses have two special conditions in the B2. The first being that it's permitted as long as it is not within 100 feet of a residential district. 822 East Ogden is not within 100 feet of any residential district here in the Village of Westmont, and over 100 feet of right-of-way separated from the border with Hinsdale and Clarendon Hills. So, it satisfies that condition. And the second condition is that the use may be administratively approved if it is under 1,000 square feet. Bowie Barker by the floor plan will occupy about 1,300 square feet, so it is not eligible for administrative approval, which is why we are before you tonight with this. Regarding parking, St. James Crossing is a multi-tenant building that existed before a text amendment in 2020 was approved, so all existing parking is deemed conforming. Therefore, no parking variance is required for any new permitted or special uses. So, in the case of Bowie Barker, they meet the minimum parking requirement with what is currently provided on site. I won't go over the services since the petitioner gave a thorough explanation of them, but I do want to highlight again that no boarding will occur as all dogs will be picked up after their appointment, and the business plans to operate daily from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And the files of fact have been provided. I can go over them if needed, and if not, that's all staff.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come to the podium and address this agenda item? Seeing none, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Boyer, Zakiri, would you like to start?
I don't really have a ton of questions, honestly. Thanks for, thanks for choosing Westmont, first and foremost. I guess the only question I have is, you probably don't see a ton of it on, because it's just a drop-and-go business. What about like dog waste? I mean, are you guys taking a dog in the back, in the front, you know? Does that come up very often? I mean, I would imagine it has to, or are the dogs? Talk to me about that a little.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to happen, right?
Yeah.
Accidents happen. We have a clean protocol, so we want to make sure we sanitize the space. We do have some waste. We'll contract with a trash vendor to have a specific container that will have the dog waste. It'll get picked up every three days or so. It's not a lot of waste. We're a pretty small business, so like there's not going to be like a ton of it.
Yeah.
But we do have a special container that we'll contract out through the waste management company that will focus on taking out that, that type of waste.
Got it. And then, you guys typically do like cleaning in the front, too? I'm sure dogs, you know, as they come in and out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, hose it down or things like that?
We clean.
Just something for neighboring businesses?
Yeah, we clean all day. My team just cleans all the time. In terms of the actual front of the space, like the dogs don't usually make accidents in there. It's usually in our space. But my staff is cleaning all day. We have clean protocols before everybody leaves, every single station, every single crate, every single bowl, every single tub, and then we spray everything down. We clean in the morning. Yeah, we're constantly cleaning. That's how we keep the space smelling good.
Cool. All good. No question, no other questions for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Well, I appreciate your presentation. You answered any questions that I had. Did you say that the animals are on camera all the time?
Yes.
Is there a way for people who, customers who bring their dog in, to see them once they leave?
No, the camera system, I have access to it as long as my management team. It's really a safety measurement more than anything else.
That's for you.
Yes. Yeah, we want to have an eye on every single dog that enters our premises and that we work on just for safety reasons. So, when we set up the space, there's a camera pointing on every single space where a dog could potentially be worked on. So, that way, if there's anything that happens or any issues that happen, we can go back and look at it. The customer does not have access to that. It would just be a management, our management that will have access to it.
Okay. I'm very positive about it. I have no other questions. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
I love the business. I'm super worried about the parking. I'm very familiar with that shopping center, and it's insane. And there's really no overflow parking. At one, it said you have 11 employees. At one time, though, how many are usually in between nine and six? How many employees are actually there?
Both be between five and six employees at one time, given just how busy we are. We'll always have one groomer to two groomers, and then we'll always have one to two bathers, obviously one front desk and one manager. So, you'll have anywhere between five and six employees to start off. We can actually do quite a bit of dogs with very little staff, which is impressive because it's a team effort. So, everybody has their part. There is some overflow parking, but it's on the ninja, code ninja side. So, our employees will not park in any of the storefront locations. They'll park away from the space and walk down. Parking is tight, but what you'll notice is there's a lot of like gyms. So, there's I think four gyms in that plaza. And so, what happens is there's a big flow, 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, of people working out, and then they stay for about an hour, 30 minutes to an hour. So, I actually operate another business in the center, and we haven't really had too many issues. I think there's a few businesses that want to have the main spots open so their customers come in and out. And so, we've just directed our customers to park a little bit further away and walk down. There's enough parking. It just, there's not enough storefront parking. So, everyone wants the first spot in front of their store, which is hard to maintain. But from my point of view, our staff won't park in those spots, and our customers will be in and out. So, they're not going to be there more, they won't be there more than five to 10 minutes unless they're going to do something else in our shopping center.
If, when someone makes an appointment to come and get their, their doggy groomed, say the appointment's at 11 o'clock, so you come there right before 11. Unfortunately, in the past for my dogs with the grooming, they've like kept them there for hours in a kennel and just took one after another. That's not the case here? You have a specific time?
Yes. So, technically, you get a time slot when you book the appointment. So, if your dog is, let's say, you know, 20 pounds, short hair, that's going to be about, and you just want a bath, that's a 45-minute service. If you want a bath and a groom, that's an hour and a half service. So, generally speaking, when you book at 11 o'clock time slot, we'll block out an hour and a half for that dog. We'll tell you two hours from a consumer perspective, but we try to get those dogs in and out. We don't want to hold the dogs. We want them to go back to their owner as fast as possible. So far in Lincoln Park, our busiest day has been 40 dogs, and we did not keep any dog more than two hours unless they were very big or very specialized. There's certain dogs, obviously, if they're like 120 pounds, 130 pounds, it's going to take us quite some amount of time to get through that grooming service. So, those dogs will take four hours or so, but we're working on them pretty much the entire time. So, they're not sitting there. We try to minimize sitting time because we don't want the dog to be anxious. And what we notice, actually, dogs are very happy in our space. Like, they like to come in because we give them treats. You know, they play with them. They take really good care of them. There's always somebody holding them. So, actually, a lot of our dogs, if you read our reviews, the parents are very happy because they're like, my dog is actually happy on the way back. And then, we also send you pictures so you see some of the comments, and customers say, wow, my dog looks really happy in that service. So, the goal is not to keep them. Obviously, we will have to put them in the kennel for at least 30 minutes, and sometimes we have to put them in a drying kennel if the dog is getting anxious. So, the dogs usually get anxious around the face. So, the body's usually fine. We can dry that really quickly. In the face, they get a little anxious, and we don't want to pressure them. So, we'll just put them in the drying cage, which they're more comfortable in. So, if it's an anxious dog that is showing signs of us like being a little bit annoyed with the noise, we'll just put them in the drying cage. It will be about 20, 30 minutes.
You put, you tape, have the dogs on tape. How long do you keep those tapes?
Good question. 45 days.
Forty-five?
Forty-five days. So, it's a live recorder. It's saved for 45 days. I can go in and save the video anytime, and if I save it, it's obviously available for whenever it's on my desktop. It'll stay in our system for 45 days.
I really do like that idea because unfortunately, I've had previous dogs injured while getting, you know, groomed, and that would have really come in handy.
Yeah. I mean, you never know, so it's better to play safe than not. So far, we've had to go back and look at it twice. One was because we weren't sure, like there was a, like there was something that the dog spit, and we weren't sure if it was from us or if they had come in with that. So, we validated that they came in with it. The other thing is whenever we notice like a scratch or a flea or anything with a dog, we'll document it and send it to you. So, we let you know that, hey, the dog came in with this FYI. Or if we notice like a medical condition, we'll flag it to you so you can take it to the vet. And so, we do try to be more proactive with looking at the dog first and doing a little bit of an inspection, what we call a report card. So, you'll get the dog weight, the hair condition, all that good stuff to your phone, and then you can keep track of it every time. We notice something, we'll let you know so that you can address it.
For the do-it-yourself dog wash, do you have to make appointments for that, or is it just walk in?
Ideally, appointment-based, but if you were to walk in, it's available. You can use it. The only thing is if you were to walk in and somebody else is using it, then you would have to wait for them to get done. But you can book it on our website, just like any other appointment, and secure your one-hour slot.
Okay. Like I say, I really like the concept, and I'm, I don't have a doggy right now, but I always get dogs that need to be groomed. I'm just really worried about the parking and the traffic flow. But other than that, I really do like the concept.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynn?
I was just, I was just curious. Do you know what the adjacent businesses are?
Yes. Yes. We're next to a vacuum store and next to a hair salon, Harmony Hair. I believe they've been there for like 25 years. So, I talked to both of them. The vacuum store, there's no concern for noise because people are in and out very quickly. The hair salon, I did chat with them about noise. They play a lot of music, and so it should be fine. I mean, dogs bark, so I can't like prevent dogs barking, but again, we try to really minimize that. We are going to soundproof both of the walls, and usually, most of the dogs bark in the kennel. So, we're going to put the kennel away from the hair salon and then soundproof that wall as well. So, we're going to do our best to soundproof as much as possible. Luckily, if it's the retail district, there's a little bit more flexibility. And then, if you guys have been there, like the gyms are really loud. And so, you won't hear us from outside. The issue will be adjacent next to us, which I've already kind of addressed with the, with the co-existent tenants, and also addressed with the landlords. If there's ever a complaint about noise, I have five business days to solve that issue in a reasonable way. So, we're aware. It's a dog business, so there's going to be some noise. We'll do everything we can to minimize that.
And then, is, is there, is there any ventilation requirements for?
No. We are installing a new HVAC system, and we're going to put a fresh air intake just for our sake, but there's no, not that I'm aware of. We're having five-foot permits yet, but we have an architect that will look at that.
Thank you. Otherwise, I'm, I don't see an issue with your business. So, congrats.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Thanks for choosing Westmont. Very cool concept. Some of the questions I had have already been asked, so I think it's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Some of my questions have been answered, but not totally. But I do have a concern about cross-pollination for the air handlers into other spaces, and also the noise. You say you're going to be doing noise attenuation, but dogs make a lot of noise. And, you know, I'm concerned about that because of, I have the foresight to know that it's going to cause problems with the neighbors. They may not know it, but it's going to. So, I know you said you plan on doing noise attenuation, but noise travels above ceiling, duct work, it can be a huge issue. So, I am not necessarily in favor. It can be a huge issue. So I am not necessarily in favor of the petition because of the impact it could have on the neighboring property from an air quality perspective, also a noise perspective. If you're holding dogs even temporarily, there's going to be a lot of barking, and you have tenants next to you in a hair salon. I just think it's going to be an impact. I also agree with Commissioner Peterson about the parking. If you're whole, if you're doing dogs and you're turning dogs within 30 minutes, if I had a dog bringing it to you, I would be waiting. I wouldn't go anywhere else, maybe somewhere else in the same center, but I wouldn't be going far if I, if it was a 30-minute window. But if you're going to do six, seven dogs an hour, there's six or seven people, you know, additional cars in the parking lot, either staging, waiting, coming in, mixed appointments, and somewhere walk in. So you're going to have, you know, an impact on the parking. So I have a concern from that perspective, too. So I think that the noise and the air quality issues, is it a separate air handler entirely for that center? Or is it something that air gets shared?
They're individual spaces, so each space has its own unit, and it's completely separate from the other units. So we have our own condenser and HVAC system. We have our own fresh intake, fresh air intake. So our systems have nothing to do with the other spaces.
Okay.
It's just for our premises. Just to clarify about the timing, most of our customers don't wait. The 30-minute notice is once we are done with your dog or we expect to be done with your dog. So for example, if I'm estimating that your dog is going to be done in 30 minutes, I text you and then you come pick up your dog within that 30 minutes. Some dogs will take an hour and a half, some will take four hours, so you're not going to stay there and wait. And so it's just a notification. So I tell you your dog is going to be ready, then you come pick up the dog within 30-minute timeframe. But the service will not take 30 minutes. I need a minimum of an hour to get most dogs complete, just for the bath. So just to clarify there. And then for parking, and I completely understand the parking situation, but it's a vacant business. It's a vacant space. No matter what you put in there, there's going to be customers that drive. And so while it's an issue I completely understand, it's also a vacant business. And so you'd rather have somebody occupying that business that can drive traffic to neighborhood businesses than leaving it vacant. And I understand the parking issue, but again, I think it's just a matter of parking a little bit further away. There is a lot of overflow parking. I just think the tenants today want that first spot in front of their business, and they don't want to walk a few blocks away.
Is your other location at this strip center with shared neighbors or not?
Our space?
Yes, your other space. It is?
Yes. It's a shopping center. I'm not sure exactly how many stores are in that shopping center. Probably at least 15 businesses, maybe. And we share next to the vacuum business and the hair salon. It used to be a subway, if anybody, I think they closed before COVID.
Yeah, I understand. Just in general, not just on your petition, but in general, people here are pretty sensitive about these kinds of uses and the way the impacts that are unknown upfront. And I'm aware of it, you know, so I'm not, I'm concerned. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's a valid concern. The noise piece is probably the biggest concern for me.
Really, even with the parking, it's an indeterminate thing. You really haven't given us a direct, there's some answer on, there could be people out in the parking lot coming, and then you have people that could be non-appointment, and you could have people overlapping, either dropping off or picking up. And you said that you could do, or how many people are going to be working on dogs in this space?
Working on dogs themselves will be between, we'll have three groomers and three bathers on staff to start off. So you'll have between four and six staff members at any given day, but not all at the same time.
Okay. I have no question, no further questions. Thank you.
Sir, you mentioned you'll be opening with 11 employees, but you may expand to as many as 25. The blueprint that you showed us, are there additional stations that those additional employees would be manning? Or what would be, that's more than doubling the number of employees in there?
Yeah, it's not all one time. So total staff size, we're open seven days a week for, you know, nine hours. We have six tables where you can groom and three tubs where you can bathe, so there's nine stations. Not all employees will work at the same time. There's a flow of, based on demand. Surprisingly, actually, the weekends are not our busiest days, surprisingly, as of right now. It's actually like weekdays, morning times. We see a lot of volume in terms of people dropping off. So we create the schedule based on demand. We want to make sure we always have available appointments, or white space is what I call. But that 25 is at 100% utilization. That means that every station is being used at that hour throughout the week. So that's our total staff size.
How many employees do you currently have in your Lincoln Park?
We have 14.
14?
Yeah, we are overstaffed.
Are they all full-time employees?
No.
Do you have some part-time, some?
Yes, yes. Yeah. I would say about, our grooming staff, we have six groomers right now for full-time, which means they work 32 hours a week or more, and then two are part-time, which they're doing about 15 hours a week.
Thank you.
Well, I have a couple more questions.
Okay. Commissioner Peterson?
You may have covered this, but what is the entry door? Is it automatic or is it the entry door into the unit? So my asking so that dogs can accidentally run out if they get loose?
Yeah, you have to pull it or push it. So if you're on the outside, you have to pull the door. If you're on the inside, you have to push it. And then the lobby door, you do have to pull.
Oh, so it's double?
Yes, double.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. So and again, no dogs should be not on leash. We don't, our policy is not to have any dog off leash.
I know, but accidents happen, and I just wanted to make, you know, make sure.
Yeah.
Do you have to be licensed to be a dog groomer or just experience?
No license requirements in the state of Illinois. It's, it's interesting, but it's, it's, it's the rules. Our approach to hiring is to pay more and hire people with experience. And so we actually are highly competitive on pay, and we tend to recruit from some of the bigger players, PetSmart, Petco, Chaslers, that have really good training programs because we pay more. And it's a much more comfortable environment for the staff. Most of the groomers are crammed into a small space, very uncomfortable, very difficult to work. Our space is large, dedicated. They have management support, which most groomers don't have. So we've hired a staff of 14 and not a single person has left, which is very hard to do because we've hired them before we opened, and we didn't have a business that existed. So you always expect turnover, and not a single person has left. So my philosophy is pay more, hire people with experience that know how to handle dogs, and then we train them on the Bowie Barker way, which we have a training team locally and a training team in California that will come out to do their initial training.
And one last question. What do you do with all the dog hair?
We have a central vac system, so we have two central vac systems.
But I mean, does it get thrown in the garbage? No way to recycle any of that with anything?
I would have to look into that. I have not thought about that before. I can take a look.
Okay. I was just curious because I would imagine on a daily basis, there's a lot of hair.
Yes, especially Huskies. There's a lot of hair with Huskies. Yeah, I mean, yeah, there is a lot of hair. That's why we put the central vac system in. I'm not sure if you can recycle it. I can take a look.
All right, thank you.
Of course.
Any other commissioners, comments, questions? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to approve under PCC 0232024, the special use permit request to operate an animal grooming business in the B2 General Business District.
Motion, Scales?
Second, Zakiri.
Motion is second. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
Approve?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
I'm a no.
I'm sorry?
I'm a no.
Okay. Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson? Vote yes. Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Well, there you have it, sir. Staff will contact you and let you know when you'll be scheduled to do that before the July 4th.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're very excited to be in Westmont.
We're looking at the December 15th.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Our next agenda item, Republic Haring, PCC 0252024, request from Fulton Westmont Limited Liability Company Corporation regarding a zoning ordinance. Text amendment as follows. Text amendment to Amendment A, Section 8.13, Special Uses in the Office Research District of the Zoning Ordinance to Add Performing Arts Studio as a special use. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chairman Council, just, we have a special use right behind this. Is it possible, I don't want to disrupt your procedure, but can we stipulate that the information provided for this one can also carry over without having to be repeated immediately after for the next?
I think so. Let's confirm with our village attorney.
Yeah, it's certainly up to you how you want to do that. I think first, though, present on the text amendment, what the language is in the district and why it's being requested.
Absolutely.
And then maybe there can be questions about that.
I was going to give a larger summary in the beginning one, and that way it just kind of will interpose into the next one. So, good evening. My name is John Simpson of Simpson de Tullow. I have the privilege of representing Fulton Westmont Il LLC today. And we're before you today for a text amendment allowing the OR district, which is located, which is at 750 Pasquenelli Drive, to add a performing arts studio. Presently, it is not permitted in this area. For those of you who are not as familiar with the site, this is just north of the St. James complex. It's on the west side of Pasquenelli. It is a four-building campus. So a lot of times, it's really referred to 740-770 Pasquenelli. It is immediately adjacent to the business district, but it is the beginning. It is the southwestmost portion of your OR district in that area. So in this instance, ownership had reached out. We had a tenant that was interested in moving locations in existing Westmont business, and we thought this would be an excellent opportunity to provide this type of use at this location. Presently, it's utilized by a number of different businesses, primarily office and research. The building at 750 Pasquenelli is presently occupied by Hummingbird Academy, which, for those of you that are familiar, it's, I believe, under the Westmont code, I think it fell under enrichment? I wasn't sure.
Medical and dental.
Medical, what was that?
Medical and dental clinic.
Medical and dental clinic. It is used as a drop-off facility. So I do want to note that if you are a parent dropping off your child there, you do not remain on-site. You drop off. And I think that's important as it's going to lead into the use and kind of the traffic demands that you see that would go with it, a performing arts studio. In this instance, and based on the way that it's defined within the Westmont code, there are no recitals that are permitted to occur for the general public, and I think that's important. That's a main question that I know came up with staff as well as ownership. So if any of you have ever had relatives that attended Expression's Dance Studio, they tend to practice or have their events, their recitals, at local high schools, such as Westmont High School, such as Downers Grove, Hinsdale. So the actual recitals themselves, when they do have something, are never on-site. They're always off-site. So that will address any traffic concerns. I know, obviously, if there's a recital, you're expecting a lot more traffic. That would not occur here at this location. So they do meet the definition in that they have no intentions of having a recital opened up to the general public at this, at this location. Presently, the stipulations that are within the Office Research District, unfortunately, just in a post-COVID environment, we are simply not seeing the demand that we did pre-COVID. The number of tenants that are seeking out office is reduced. People who have existing office spaces are reducing their footprint. And I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole industry, but I'm sure you're well aware the research component of the Office Research District is, for lack of better words, is starting to die out. It's just not as much in demand as we had seen in years past. That being said, there is a present vacancy at this location, at the proposed site of 750 Pasquenelli. And we believe that it would be a ripe opportunity to be adjacent to Hummingbird Academy as well as the performing arts studio right next to it, since it seems to be similar use, similar ages, similar demand, and potentially supplemental to each other where they can have students attending both potentially. The current alignment with the comprehensive plan that I would draw towards is I do believe that it supports the growth of local business. The studio that we are proposing is Expression's Dance Studio, which is located, you know, just a few hundred feet away on Cass Avenue in our downtown district. It's been there since, she has been in Westmont, the owner has been in Westmont since 2009. She's looking to drastically increase the footprint, and I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us in Westmont to keep it in Westmont. And I say this because I'm also a resident of Westmont, and I live in the Oakwood area, so this is right in my backyard. So I'm intimately familiar with this kind of location and the items here. I do believe that within the comprehensive plan, as it talks about promoting local growth of business as well as promoting or encouraging buildings or areas that are functionally obsolete or accommodating more appropriate and market-viable uses, I do believe this falls into that category. In the area, we do have some accessory uses, buildings that have deli shops or gyms, Creme de la Creme Daycare's over there as well. So there are pockets of different items other than just office or research. They do in a way supplement or allow us to avoid having obsolete areas. A lot of our proposal, as it relates to this use, is taking into account challenges that we observe firsthand at its present location with Expression's Dance Studio. So for those of you not familiar, Mr. Williams, I wasn't sure, would it be helpful, can we put the aerial? Yes. Just hit, right?
No, unfortunately, it's okay.
If it's okay, will this pick me up?
You should stay near the microphone.
I'll stay right here. I'm just going to point to one spot just so everyone could see. It's right here, and this is Pasquenelli along this way. There are two ingress and egress right here.
You have that on your laptop right there? You could?
Oh, yes, thank you. I apologize. Yeah, that would have, can you see the cursor? It's a little difficult, but there are two ingress and egresses at this location, and one of them allows you to turn three different ways, well, turn two ways or go straight. The reason why we like that is it allows a greater traffic flow and a lot of opportunity to come across parking. There's, in my opinion, there's very little chance, if any, of any backup. We have yet to see it. I've also included aerial views that are from 2019, 2021, 2023. They don't utilize their current parking. They have more than sufficient parking. The existing parking on this site accommodates 382 vehicles. The total building square footage is 110,294, so it's right around three and a half cars per thousand feet. The
Scroll down.
Present slide, I'm trying, ah, the present slide here, this is taken from DuPage County, so this went a little bit out of order. This is presently, or the 2023 view, so I'm just trying to call your attention to a business day in terms of the traffic and the parking that's utilized at this location. This is 2021. Obviously, that's immediately apparent that we're in a COVID environment here as there's, I think, you know, under 20 cars total there. And this is a, just an idea of the proposed traffic flow, just to give you an idea of the size. This would be, we anticipate if someone were coming from the north, so they're heading southbound on Pasquenelli, they could enter at the northmost portion and then curve around. What you'll notice is we intend to have a drop-off zone that's located to the south of this building. And again, in comparison to the present challenges that we see, one of the things we've noticed is that there are no sidewalks at, for the parking lot at its present location. And why we want to point that out, because in terms of safety, when you have a bunch of little kids and you have moms and dads that are driving SUVs, it's very difficult when every car has to reverse, but there's no sidewalks for the kids to go to. You're basically You're basically encouraging children to have to cross behind a car. And they don't always know, you know, the difference or what to look out for. So, what we like about this site, and what we like about our location to accommodate a performing arts studio, is we have sidewalks that are all adjacent alongside the building, allowing mothers and fathers or guardians who are dropping off their children, for the kids, when they get out of the car, to go towards the sidewalk, instead of going behind the vehicles and then eventually trying to get to the front door. It seems trivial. If you've had the opportunity to see what it's like, it can actually be pretty dangerous. And it's something that I know was a concern, and that got brought up both by staff and by other of the officials that expressed concern. So, we do like, in terms of safety, we believe this is a drastic increase in terms of safety. We believe this is a drastic increase in terms of total amount of parking as well. And I apologize, because I did miss that part. Presently, the occupant, or Expression's Dance Studio occupies 6,600 square feet, and they're allocated approximately 17 parking spaces. At the proposed location, we are going to offer 15,237 square feet, and the amount of parking allocated is 52 spots. So, there is an increase in terms of the number of spots per square foot. But additionally, as you can see, the, just the demand in general, there's more parking. There isn't anything specifically reserved, so you can park wherever you want on the site. Though most people park whatever's closest to the front door. But I mention that because a lot of these office and, the office and businesses are peak hours. And Expression's Dance, or Performing Arts Studio, this one in particular, operates primarily in off-peak hours. The kids get out of school, and then they go to the dance studio. So, it doesn't even really begin until the 3 o'clock, 3:30 timeline, and then goes until about 9 o'clock. And I want to say 9:30 is when we expect everyone out. And that's for our older dancers, that obviously, we're not expecting our three, four-year-old dancers to be there till 9 o'clock at night. With that being in mind, I don't believe I have any other items here. I know that was the major concern. And again, I apologize, this was just to see the traffic flow. This isn't one that has to occur that manner. Again, if you reverse the arrows out, you can also go straight through, and you can also go to the right. So, you can go northwest or south from one of the entrances as well. And again, that's important, because it virtually makes it, nothing's impossible, obviously, but it virtually makes it impossible to have a backup to Pasquenelli, which we certainly see already here on Cass Avenue, which is also exacerbated by the train that runs through. So, this, in my opinion, is a win both for Westmont, for the downtown area, as well as for Fulton Westmont, Illinois, because it solves a lot of issues all at once. And with the performing arts studios, I know that we had, I believe BAM Theater came to town. So, it is a little bit of a, of a different setup. But it's an existing business, a good partner to Westmont, so they kind of know, they know their operations, as well as the quality of their owners and instructors that are there. That being said, I don't have anything else to add to this portion, unless the Commissioners want me to continue to the next one, or if you want me to separate it.
No, I think this is sufficient for this portion. And, yeah, obviously, we have to get past this one. We can't go to the next one.
Right.
Let's go to staff.
Sure.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. To me.
Yes, senior planner, Williams.
Thank you, Chair. So, we have this first case, which is, as mentioned by John, is a text amendment for the OR district specifically. The OR district is, if you have a zoning map in front of you, I did provide one on the second page here in the staff report, is the light blue area. Primarily, we see it on Pasquenelli and Oakmont Lane, although we do have some, some properties scattered throughout town, such as around Ty Warner Park. And then we have a few on the south end of town as well. So, when we process text amendments, this one in particular is from a petitioner, not from the staff level. That's why you saw a petitioner presenting it. In the cases when we, we get requests for text amendments, we're looking at our current code and the purposes of that district, and then also the comprehensive plan, to make sure that the proposed use is in compliance with those requirements, those regulations. So, in this case, the text amendment specifically for the performing arts studio in the OR district, the OR district, the purpose of it is to have primarily offices and research centers. However, we've been slowly seeing more requests, and we've talked about it in prior meetings, for more uses in that district because of the changes during COVID and vacancy rates. So, we've seen, and we've been attuned to those changes at the staff level. When we see uses that don't necessarily align perfectly with the purpose of the district, such as in this case, we ask them to, in this case, we ask them to process this as a special use for the use list. So, it wouldn't be a permitted use. They still, any use that would, any performing arts studio that would want to move in would still have to come in for approvals, no matter what, as presented here. They'd have to be in line with the special use standards. No special conditions on top of that are being proposed. The definition for a performing arts studio specifically is an establishment, an establishment housing a school or instructional facility for dancing, music, both instrumental and voice, drama, stagecraft. This shall not include use of performances given to the public. So, that's why John mentioned that in his, in his presentation here, related to the performances given. So, John also mentioned the comprehensive plan, and I've noted it in, in the staff report under the comprehensive plan section. The, as I said, the OR district's primarily on the north end of town, and it provides employment opportunities and local investment within the community. Staff doesn't see an issue with moving this forward just because of the comprehensive plan for this request specifically. So, on the last page of the staff report, you'll see existing language in our code. It lists out Section 8.12, which is the list of permitted uses in that district. You'll notice it's a very short list. It lists offices, research facilities, religious institution, daycare centers, ATMs, and medical and dental clinics, and then a list of accessory uses to facilitate those office uses. In this case, this isn't considered an accessory use to anything. This is, would be a primary use amendment for the special use section. Right now, in the special use section for allowable uses in the OR district, we allow offsite parking of automobile inventory for locally franchised automobile dealerships, subject to a plethora of requirements. We also have special uses for full-service and standalone restaurants, seating no less than 200 persons, and offering no drive-through services. We have hotels. We have outdoor eating areas, accessory to specific permitted retail and food and beverage establishments. We have catering facilities. And then we have another accessory use section for special uses, related to the fabricating, processing, assembly, warehousing, or distributing of materials, goods, products, or products. And then they also have subject requirements for that specific accessory use. The petitioner is proposing to add performing arts studios specifically to the special use section, which would put it under, it would be replaced with G in that section, accessory uses would be down further as H. So, when you have a text amendment, it applies to the whole district, not to a specific property. So, he mentioned that following this request, there's going to be another request for a special use for a specific business, Expression Dance Studio. But in this case, this would be applicable to the whole OR district entirety, although every time a business would want to move in for a performing arts studio, it would still have to come in for approval, just like they're going to be doing following this. That's generally what staff has been looking at. We've also noted that a lot of these buildings in the OR district weren't really built out for these specific, specific types of uses for performing arts studio. They plan on doing interior remodeling, things like this, in this particular case. But we do have other buildings that have always been offices and have always operated offices. And that's why we were more, staff had more of a preference for this to be proposed as a special use rather than a permitted use outright, so we can review those at the commission level and the village board level as well. That's all I have for the text amendment. I'm happy to answer questions specifically for the text amendment. I'll throw it over to the Chair.
All right. Thank you. I'll just point out for everybody on the board, that this, all OR districts in the, in the village, including the ones that are west of Ty Warner Park and across the street south, would apply. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to come forward and address the commission on this? Seeing none, let's, let's go to the Commissioners. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to start?
Anybody, I'm in favor of this. Anybody who has driven down Cass Avenue at, during the time of drop-off, or...
Wait, I'll stop you right, right here, sir. If this business were to leave that location and relocate, that would not prevent another business from going into that same space. Is that not correct?
Correct. I would say, for now, let's focus on the text amendment specifically. You're more relating to the specific special use request that will follow this.
Yes. Right. Right. Yeah.
So, so I'm in favor of the, this now. Now address my concern later.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lynn.
So, this would be, and, sorry, this is in regard, I, I see now that you're separating the two, and thank you. And regards, this is regards to the text amendment to the OR district for...
For adding performing arts studios.
Art studios. And performing arts studios includes dance, of course, right?
Correct.
Does, does the OR district, it's not all ground-floor units. There might be multiple units, multiple floor units.
Correct. We have multiple buildings in the OR district that have second-plus stories.
Right. Sorry to interrupt you.
I was just going to say, that's why staff has recommended for the petitioner, if they were going to propose this text amendment, to do it as a special use, because we do see impacts in those type of cases.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about, like, the floor loading of, like, what was thought to be an office building, but then becomes like an assembly-type building. Like, so is that, so does, does treating it as a special use, does that cover, like, that?
They would basically, being treated as a special use, they would have, any proposed performing arts studio would have to come in for approvals for the specific unit or building that they're going to occupy. And those type of questions could be of concern for this commission. Obviously, most of them would need building permits to retrofit the existing office unit in those cases, which we've done at the permitting level, to make sure, like you said, load requirements, everything's being met, that's done at permitting. But for the use itself, and how it impacts surrounding uses, and those special use standards that would apply, that would be for this commission, in this commission's purview.
Is it, is there in here a map of the OR?
There is one provided in the staff report. It's on the second page.
Yeah, page, page two.
It shows, it's the light blue section. It's largely Pasquenelli and then Oakmont Lane. There are a few properties around Ty Warner and on North Cass that are that same color. We do have one other property on the south end of town. It's currently a dental clinic on South Cass, just before Darian. And then we have another office area called Anchor Rock. However, that's under a judgment order. So, they have very specific requirements for their uses that this necessarily would not apply to, this text amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, yes, it, it sounds okay, although I, I can't help but think about some, I guess, I, just, just to some of the structural aspects that might come with it. So, I guess it's a yes in terms of use.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Scales.
Thank you for the presentation. I have no comments or questions.
Commissioner Lavoy.
I will also say thanks to you, John, for bringing this forward, because it does more than you know. And in my opinion, what we have here is, since COVID, we have office space that gets strained because of lack of tenants and vacancy and space. This is an adaptive reuse, and it sets the stage for sustainability for these developments in town. So, this adaptive reuse is, is a very small impact, and you can use that space with very minimal changes to the space, which is, when you think about it, if a building like that is totally vacant, and the owner of that property has to pay taxes on that space, it is a huge strain. So, what happens is that those office parks become vacant. They get sold, and they get redeveloped at a huge cost. This is an adaptive reuse. It is, it should be, this sets the example, this type of text amendment sets the example for us to move forward on the whole corridor, really, to use this type of concept to get this space reused, and reused with a business that, that is thriving, and a business that, that will be able to use this space very effectively, and be able to grow within the space. So, I applaud your efforts. I applaud your efforts as, as the end user for setting the stage for adaptive reuse that I would welcome, and I champion, I 100% support the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zakiri.
No questions to the petitioner. Just, I guess, one for staff is, and I'm just looking at this, under permitted uses, you have daycare as D, and then under special uses, daycare as A.
Yes, that is a error from when a text amendment was done for daycares. They should be listed as permitted only.
Got it.
In our current code.
Yeah, other than that, no, no questions. I just wanted to clarify what I was saying there.
Eagle eye, well done. Same here. I, this makes sense to me. So, under Public Hearing, PCC 0252024, text amendment to Appendix A, special uses in the office research district of the zoning ordinance to add performing arts studio as a special use. Chair would stand, would accept motion to approve.
Motion, Scales. I'll second.
Motion, I second. Discussion? Seeing none.
I second.
Lavoy, I'm second.
Thank you.
As roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. Okay, so, we've cleared that hurdle, and now we can move on to Public Hearing, PCC 024, a request from the same applicant for the property of 750 Pasquenelli Drive for the following, a special use permit to operate a performing arts studio in the OR district. Mr. Simpson, you're up again.
Thank you again, Chairman Commissioners. To somewhat reiterate everything we said before, and to go, give a little context, the special use was essentially to allow the municipality more power, right, in terms, or at least more jurisdiction in terms of what goes in there. So, I do appreciate, Commissioner Lynn, your thought in terms of the structural weight. That was something that I genuinely never considered. There are buildings, obviously, that are multi-story. But for the most part, these are, in this complex, everything is one story. So, four buildings, one story, with sizable roadways on the north, south, and west sides. What we like... What we like about this, and the reason why I had mentioned the initial presentation for a special use is Hummingbird Academy is adjacent to it. And the owner actually utilizes Hummingbird as well, and for her family, as well as do I know a number of other people that utilize her dance studio and do both. So I am here, actually, because not only did I happen to go to school with these fine owners, but I also have a daughter who attends that dance academy, so I am acutely aware of the traffic impacts that we see here, and that's kind of what brought this on. It happened to be, we were at a recital, I think in Downers, and it just was a fluke, it just all worked out at the same time. And what I do think is important to note here is the greatest concerns that both staff, as well as other residents in the area, have expressed was safety, traffic, noise, parking. And we feel that based on its location, this particular address is in a unique situation to accommodate every one of those requirements for a special use. It's got a greater setback off Pasquenelli as opposed to Cass Avenue. It has much more parking in its availability, and parking spaces that can be utilized during off-peak hours. We anticipate the hours of Monday through Friday going between 3:00 and 9:30. So again, most of our office ends at 5:00, but just to remind you, if you look at the photos, just look at the parking, and just so you know, it's not just our building. I think what's nice about the aerial views is, look at the multi-story building, you know, to the east, to the northeast, to the north, this is a trend you're seeing everywhere. There's going to be more than sufficient parking in order to accommodate this use, which I believe is going to resolve all of the other domino effects that we've seen at its present location. And obviously, being a resident here, you don't want to see a company that starts here, grows here, starts with, you know, 10 people, and now has over, what, 200 people in your dance company? And then 600 families? 650? 630 families, present families utilize Expression Dance Studio. And so I couldn't think of a better way or a better compliment to the village than to say, hey, they started here, and they want to, you know, stay here. It's important, a lot of the parents, as well as the students, like the location. Westmont is a great location in terms of where we are for our current residents or participants, I should say, students, my apologies. So that being said, with it being proposed as a special use, we believe that this will meet the same, the same standards that we've spoken before in terms of the tax amendment, that it will further the objectives, and it does meet all the necessary regulations and requirements you're looking for. I'm doing my best to kind of address some of the issues that I've heard come up. I don't know if I missed it, I apologize, feel free to ask, I'll try and save you guys some time here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff?
Thank you, Chair. So coupled with the last tax amendment requests, the petitioner is also requesting the performing art studio special use permit approval. Just to clarify, if this moves on to the Village Board, the request may only be processed for the special use if the tax amendment is ultimately approved. Now, this particular property is Brush Hill Office Court. It is a large complex with four buildings, 300-plus spaces available for parking, and as John mentioned, they have two exits and entrances on the property. The surrounding properties are kind of a mix of uses. So to the south, we have commercial in the business, general business district, and then to the southwest, we have residential in the Oakwood subdivision, R3. And then to the north, we have larger office complexes along Pasquenelli. 750 Pasquenelli is the farthest building from Pasquenelli Drive. This particular unit is in the corner, the south corner of the complex. John already mentioned the space size, so I won't get into that particularly. The request for the special use permit is specifically for Expression Dance Studio. So we've alluded to a lot, and I'm gonna talk about this, because we have new commissioners here who weren't here for this approval, but Expression Dance Studio was approved for a special use permit and a parking variance at 25 South Cass in 2014. They're planning on relocating the entire facility to 750 Pasquenelli Drive. At their current building, we have, there have been several times, we haven't had formal complaints at the code enforcement level, but we've heard from the general public that parking has been an issue on that property and the flow of traffic. Now, although they're gonna be, if they're approved, they would be moving to this facility, Doug, our chair, did mention that although they're moving, the special use still is intact for that property up to 180 days after they leave and it's set vacant, after 180 days.
180 days?
Correct.
Thank you.
The, after it's vacant, then the special use goes away. However, if Expression Dance Studio leaves, a dance studio can move in there with the current special use. So there is a time, basically, in our code currently, that allows for a dance studio to still move in there, as long as it's the exact same use. So it would have to be specifically a dance studio, and in line with their special use standards. The parking variance on that property would still be, still apply to the property, because that runs with the land. Now, specifically for 750 Pasquenelli, the petitioner has listed in here the general staff that will be on the property. They think about 12 members on site during the operating hours for the dance studio, with 25 staff members total. They list out their operating hours, but generally, it's from the morning till 9:00, with a lot of their smaller class sizes during the day, and then their larger classes at night. In their presentation, they also mentioned that they do a staggered start for their class schedule. So we don't expect a lot of issues with the traffic flow for two reasons. One is the staggered schedule starting, and then also, a lot of the uses in this complex are operating during the day and not necessarily at night. So there's gonna be likely offset hours in general for the whole office complex. Related to parking, they mentioned that they have about 52 spaces just for this dance studio in this particular unit. The requirement for the previous user, which was offices, was 55 spaces, parking spaces, and then the requirement for a dance studio, in particular, performing art studio, is 19 parking spaces at the minimum, due to the potential students, and usually how these operate for dance studios is, parents usually stick around with dance studios to watch their children. We expect that number to be a little higher than 19, and just based on previous approvals, we expect that to be a little higher. So the zoning code requires 19, but we expect more than that, and they have 52 currently that would be utilized for this particular use. The special use standards are listed in here, just like with the first case. I'm happy to answer questions about them in particular, but I am here for any questions that the commission has, or clarifications. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Again, anyone from the public who would like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll, let's start with Commissioner Peterson.
I have no questions or comments. I've always liked the dance studio, not necessarily its location, but anything, you know, with the kids, that's great, and I'm glad you'll be able to stay in town and expand a little bit. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynn?
Yeah. Likewise, like, it's, I walk down Cass Avenue, and so I guess, maybe the only thing is, I'll just miss not seeing, like, the, all the kiddos inside dancing as I walk past, but I don't, yeah, that's my only comment.
Great. Commissioner Scales?
No comments or questions, thanks.
Commissioner Lavoy?
I'll just reiterate the importance of adaptive reuse for sustainability of our office corridor. This is a key project. It should be approved, and I want to emphasize it, because I want the Village Board to really realize the importance of adaptive reuse. And this petition is vitally important for sustainability. So I applaud the effort, and I totally support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Zakiri?
Yeah, super supportive of the project, as somebody who has three daughters who dance at Expressions. Thursdays at 4:45 is my personal nightmare, so I'm all for this, so no other commentary to make.
Commissioner Thomas?
I don't have to say anything else about parking, or dropping off, or anything, I think. It's a great location for you, and it's almost perfect. Welcome.
Okay, my turn. I agree, and I certainly echo Commissioner Lavoy's point, and this is a win-win. At this point, Chair would entertain a motion to approve public hearing, PCC 0242024, special use permit to operate a performing art studio in the OR district. So move, Thomas? Do I have a second?
I'll second Lavoy.
Second Lavoy. Thomas Lavoy. Jill did not volunteer for this position as secretary, and we do appreciate, it's not easy. Roll call, please. Is there further discussion? I just need to confirm. Okay, not, roll call, please.
Sorry, is this, is this roll call now for expression, or for the tax?
For expression, yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
I'll recuse.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Where you have it, folks, staff will contact you when you're scheduled to go before the Village Board.
So we expect this to be on the December 5 Village Board meeting, both the tax amendment and the special use request.
Okay. All right, good night. Next item, we see a gentleman patiently waiting in the rear to hear public hearing, PCC 0222024, request by the Westmont Park District regarding the property located at 867 and 888 Black Hawk Drive, James Long Park here in Westmont, for two things. One, a zoning ordinance variance to construct a maintenance garage within a required rear yard setback in the M Manufacturing District. Secondly, a site plan amendment approval for a maintenance garage. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Carmichael.
Before we start, sorry, he needs to swear in.
You were not here when we swore in earlier.
Oh, let's do that.
And all of your testimony will be fully truthful.
Yes.
Floor is mine?
All yours.
Okay, thank you. Well, this particular topic and variance request with site plan approval, if it seems a bit like deja vu from this time last year, it absolutely is. We're back in front of you again tonight, asking for the same thing, just in a bit of a different location, a little bit of a twist to it. I'd like to go to the overhead. James Long Park sits between Ty Warner Park and Westmont Junior High. Across the street is a small parking lot that is Park District property. Prior to the extension and construction of Black Hawk Drive, this all used to be one parcel known as Lot 28. This boundary line is what defined Lot 28. It then got split. Across the street is the parking lot. The Park District owns more than just this parking lot. This triangular space is all what we refer to as Parcel 6. Everything within the dash line is actually leased by Willow Crest Golf Course from a 1984 lease created by the village to help build and develop the hotel and Willow Crest Golf Course. It was then conveyed over to the Park District. Originally, we were looking to build the satellite garage to help our operations north of Ogden Avenue, primarily Ty Warner Park, because we are basically working out of a closet right now, and we need this for our maintenance exercises and for equipment, small equipment. We were gonna build it in this location, which you approved this time last year. That is on the leased premises that are leased by the hotel ownership out of California. They were not compelled to agree to the lease amendment. We are now back having to come up with an alternative solution, and that is now what is highlighted in yellow. Basically, the same request for a small satellite garage with a variance setback, and there would be some additional fencing in that particular location, not only for our maintenance practices, but for the dumpsters that currently sit there on the north side of that parking lot. Very simple elevation here, would be a very simple satellite garage, 18 feet by 30 feet, no restrooms, no offices, insulated with a little bit of heat, just to get it through wintertime for the equipment we'll have in that location. It would have electricity and a, basically a hose bib hookup for a garden hose. What that would look like on the site plan in the parking lot, we would have to remove part of the curb, expand that area to accommodate the dumpsters and the maintenance facility as well. It's that straightforward, that simple, and again, site plan and variance setback request. If I go back to the aerial, just one note, there is a fence line that runs right along the north side of the parking lot, that is not the property line. The property line is this green dash line that is inside the maintenance yard, that is where we would take the setback from. Do you have any questions?
I'm, so are the dumpsters gonna be to the west, then, of the new locate?
Dumpsters would be to the east and west.
Okay, one east, one west?
Correct, behind the lot gate.
Okay. All right, good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing else, unless you have any further questions.
Senior Planner Williams, say ye.
Thank you, Chair. So, as Mr. Fleck mentioned, we have seen a very similar case in the past. The approval for that site plan is attached to this packet for reference for my newer commissioners who maybe weren't at that meeting in particular. The request is very similar. The reason they have to come back in for this request is because our current zoning ordinance has very little wiggle room for site plan approvals. So if there's an adjustment to a structure in basically any direction, the petitioner has to come back in to get reapproval. In this case, this is also tied to a variance. The variance is the same variance that was approved previously, but because it's a new location, that needs to be reapproved as well. So there's no, there's no changes to the park itself on the south parcel. The changes are only to the north parcel related to the parking lot and maintenance garage and the two dumpsters. The fencing would comply with, or the proposed fencing would comply with our requirements for that district. There'd not be any variances needed for that in particular. The parking that is currently there has historically been used for the trash out in the open right now, so enclosing it in this case would be preference for staff as well. It does affect the parking there, but the parking has not been utilized since I've been with the village, it has historically been with the dumpsters there. So I believe it's seven spaces, and correct me if I'm wrong, that are currently there, technically painted.
On the north side?
Yeah.
Correct.
But they're not actively being used currently.
They've been taken out of use.
So there, the two requests, the variation for the setback, the requirement is 30 feet, they're at 20 feet, we have to use...
We have to use the bulk standards for a primary structure because it's the only structure on the property. It's not an accessory structure like a detached garage normally is. Uh, so we have to use the bulk standards for a primary structure. That's where the variance request is derived from. The standards for variation are listed in your packet. I can go through them. You also have the findings of fact as well, um, that should be, should have been left at your, uh, seat coming into this meeting. Um, and then the site plan approval, uh, is tied to that variance as well. Um, I'm open to any questions or clarifications from the commission.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address the commission? Seeing none, uh, go to the commissioners here. Commissioner Lynn, would you like to start?
Yeah, will the dumpsters be visible from Blackhawk?
Uh, behind a fence, uh, they are now, but when they go behind the fence, they will be hidden. We will be putting up a, um, whatever, I think it's a seven-foot fence.
Yeah, six or seven, whichever, uh, seven complies with the district.
Yes. We would, we would put up a seven-foot fence and our intent would be to put some wind screens on that fence as we've done at our maintenance garage on Quincy Street.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
Thank you. Can you describe, you just mentioned a curb cut. Can you go back to that portion of your presentation or just elaborate a little bit further what you?
Yeah. Currently, right now, you could see the curb line that exists for the parking lot. We would remove this curb, expand the area for the dumpster and put in a new curb on the east side and again on the west side. The main reason for that, well, there's two reasons, to accommodate the dumpsters, but also to allow for the geometry necessary for the, the dumpster truck from Flood Brothers to navigate into that lot, pick up the dumpster and haul it away.
So you're not affecting the existing curb cut into the property itself? This is further, further in? Or am I misunderstanding that?
Oh, the curb, the removal of curb, expansion of the concrete slab that's going to be there, and then the new curb is all within the Park District property.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That helps. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yeah, Bob, it's administrative in nature. It's, I don't really have any issues with it, other than maybe a suggestion and that would be if you're going to keep equipment in this new building, maybe to have a way where that equipment can navigate to Ty Warner without going out into the street, maybe going across the crosswalk or something to get you across to the Blackhawk and then across the crosswalk into Ty Warner without going down the street. I don't know if that's a concern of yours or not, but it doesn't, you know, it's something where we're taking a lot of equipment and small stuff out onto the street.
Mm-hmm. And we're already doing that.
They're doing that now, but it might be a suggestion that if you want to get them in a crosswalk there, to press the curb and you could...
Happy to talk to Public Works, talk to the village, but also the property to the east of it is, I'm sorry, to the west, is private property. I don't know if there would be any agreement or possibility of using, using that.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I just thought I'd bring that up because I know you're going to drive down the road with the equipment, so.
Yeah.
It's okay with me.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Zakiri?
No questions here.
All good.
Commissioner Thomas?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Peterson?
I have no comments or questions.
Well, I do. Excellent. You always do.
Life is good.
Well, I, I would like after the votes, if you could give us just a brief update on those other projects that came through almost a year ago.
Oh, sure can.
But we can finish.
If, if that is allowable, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. Well, after the vote.
All right. Village attorney comment before my question.
Hi, Bob. Uh, the ordinance approving this, like the ordinance back in January, approving this, will state that it's the Park District's responsibility to continuously maintain, repair, and replace as necessary the fence and landscaping shown on this property. So you're aware?
Always, as we do with all our parcels.
I'm curious, this is 18 by 30, that 540 square foot building. Where are you keeping your equipment currently?
Uh, we have some small equipment in the shelter across the street, backpack blowers, weed whips, a push mower. Uh, there is a little storage room. Basically, it's the, uh, access to some of the plumbing for the restrooms that are over there. And then across the street at Ty Warner Park, at the concession building where the restrooms are located, uh, that is where we have, uh, the utility carts, the mowers, uh, the park patrol golf cart, uh, you know, shovels rooms, those kinds of things. And when you need to get something, you literally have to pull out all the equipment to go get one piece of equipment out. It's, it's not ideal at all. Guys are climbing over equipment to access things. We don't want a workman's comp claim.
Well, this should also increase productivity and...
Absolutely, yeah.
Possibly safety. Okay, well, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
First is, uh, now first with the zoning ordinance variance request for the maintenance So move. And the second?
Second, Scales.
Second, Scales. No discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Um, Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, and second, a site plan amendment approval for a maintenance garage.
Motion, Scales.
Motion, Scales.
Second, Zakiri.
Second, Zakiri. Discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, uh, I guess you'll still have to go through the village board on this.
Village Board tomorrow, 6 o'clock.
Be there.
Already on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's at 6:00 PM tomorrow. Yes?
Um, can Bob give us a quick update?
You want an update?
Oh, yeah.
Can we first go to open forum and then he can do the update?
Oh, okay.
Not on the agenda technically, so.
Okay, good point. This is, that's not on the agenda. So new business is completed. Uh, open forum is the next item on the agenda. Is there anyone who'd discuss anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes?
I will begin. Last year, one, two particular projects that got combined into one construction contract was the improvements at Fritz Werly Park and James Long Park. James Long Park being right here. We added at James Long Park two new pickleball courts, lighted, and then we moved the sand volleyball court to the east side of the basketball courts. That involves some earthwork, a little bit of work on the detention basin, which is still ongoing. That project is almost complete, but some of the, uh, the restoration and the earthwork is still incomplete. But the pickleball courts are open, they're playable, the nets are up. Fritz Werly Park, we replaced the playground, added a 20 by 20 open air shelter and a pathway looping the interior of that particular park to the two sidewalks on Trouby and on Warwick Avenue. And then we upgraded and replaced all the asphalt around and behind the backstop. That is complete. That was completed two weeks ago, fully restored. Grass hasn't started growing yet, but that project is also done as well. The All Wheels Park at Diane Main Park, that one has moved at glacial speed. One of the reasons, the main reason it has moved at glacial speed, and I think it's something the village is quite familiar with, ComEd. ComEd has finally, just last week, come out and disconnected the old service for the preschool that is going to be torn down and energized our new electric panels that are at that location that have been installed so we can tear down the preschool. That was supposed to happen back in August and, uh, they just made that happen. Uh, for that reason, we've missed the fall construction season. I have yet, in fact, I hope tomorrow to have time to submit for the demolition permit to remove the preschool. So that particular project now, maybe we'll get the preschool down this fall still and get the site prepped and ready. Construction of the All Wheels Park is now been moved to springtime. That is the domino that has to fall before then Bellerife Park can be converted to six permanent pickleball courts at Bellerife Park. We are not going to remove the existing bike and skate park until the new one is open and usable. So that's, that's been a challenge, but that's where we are. And the digital sign, we're still working through the issue with, uh, in the question of easements, uh, because the new digital sign is being proposed on an existing easement for the village's water tower and it's not so easy to just go get a sign permit to be able to do that. We have to get the utilities to sign off on that new digital sign easement. Once we get through that, then we're going to move forward with a sign permit. I think that was everything that was...
The little park on North Grant.
Pardon?
The park...
Oh, my gosh, how could I forget that?
I know, I know. There was a sign up there recently.
Uh, so that is, we're calling that Grand Street Neighborhood Park. It is between Chicago Avenue and Ogden Avenue. The addresses currently are 314 and 350 North Grand Street. This summer, we were out there and we did the site clearing, the brush removal, removal of dead trees, uh, and then got a topographic survey afterwards. Recently, over the fall, I prepared the, uh, the conceptual plan for it, now that we have a topographic survey, and, uh, came up with a new master plan, presented that to the board last month. And then once the board blessed it, we then held just last week a public information meeting for the neighbors around that park. Uh, we had nice attendance for that. Uh, they got to come out and see the final plans, ask their questions. Overall, generally a very positive meeting, especially the young families very excited about a new neighborhood park. I will begin construction documents on that in December and then in January, we are going to go to public bid for spring construction on that one. So that one is, is on the schedule that it's always been on, uh, and that one's moving along up there.
I appreciate the update.
I believe you used some of the trees you cut down there, some of those old hedge trees for the pocket, for that, uh, the playground equipment.
Yeah, and I, I got to tell you, after I saw the, the skill at which the village forester repurposed those, I almost regret letting him have those trees because I kind of now would like to do the same thing in the new park. Because we are going to have a, a naturalized element to, uh, that park on Grand Street as well. It's going to be a typical neighborhood park, uh, but yes. So when I, when I called him and told him those were going to be taken down because two of them were dead, uh, even though they probably stay there for a while, they're very, it's incredibly strong wood, much harder than oak, maple, anything. Um, those Osage oranges are incredibly hardwood. Uh, I told him that and he said, and this was a Friday, he said, can I get those? I said, absolutely, yeah. You want to come cut them down for us? You go take them down. He says, I'll be there tomorrow. I said, on Saturday? He says, yes. Because of the timing to finish that new pocket park there on Cass Avenue. So, uh, he took them down. They're kind of gnarly looking. Um, we used them for, uh, the post, for the shade structures, and then also part of the play area in the back. And the execution of how we use those was, was tremendous. Really turned out great.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you, Bob.
All right. Thank you all. Okay.
Next item under miscellaneous, uh, first general updates, our next meeting will be the, uh, second Wednesday of, uh, December the 11th, and I think you said we already have two or three items.
Correct. We have two or three items, maybe four for that agenda as of now. Um, so we will have a meeting in December 11th. I know it's getting to holiday season, so please let me know if you're not going to be at that meeting.
As far as anyone knows, anyone going to be absent, uh, on the second Wednesday next month? Good.
Um, I have a few more updates. Uh, the second one is, uh, we are having a discussion at CDC tomorrow with the village, before the village board meeting. CDC is the Community Development Committee, um, regarding density for multifamily developments. If you're able to make it to that and you can listen in, uh, those discussions take a little bit longer because we have, those minutes are only released quarterly, so you might not see it, but depending on that discussion, something may come back to this commission regarding, uh, density increases in multifamily. And then the last thing I have is please do your HR training if you have not.
Okay. Who has completed their, what, sexual harassment, uh, training?
I completed mine just like I did the last three years through the company that I worked with. I'll send an email.
The deadline was how long ago?
Uh, I think it was October.
Yeah.
I finished mine.
So.
HR hasn't contacted me yet, but I'd like to get ahead of it. That's all I have.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Scales.
And second? LaVoy?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned.